Okay. We've held our closed session, we'll move on with our, uh, start with our pledge of allegiance. All rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite. Roll call please.
Dr. Goodwell.
Here.
Mr. Ferris.
Present.
Mr. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Hedley.
Here.
Mr. Hobel. Mr. Maselli. Mr. Parisi.
Here.
Okay. First item on our agenda tonight then is our consent agenda. Uh, it's printed in your materials. Uh, there's an addendum, um, an amendment, an employment addendum. Just take a moment to review the consent agenda. Let me know if any board member would like to pull any items from the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Uh, otherwise when you're ready, uh, this suggested motion on page two of your materials in your boardroom.
Move to wave the reading out and approve the consent agenda as printed in the board agenda, including the routine personnel matters addendum dated December 10th.
Motion by Mr. Parisi, seconded by Dr. Goodwell. Goodwell. Oh, Goodwell. Can't get anything out of my mind. Alright, uh, roll call please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public, staff and board to address the board. Now let's start with public comments. Does anyone register? If we do not, or nobody signed up to speak to the board, are there any members of the public who wish to address the board at this time? Okay, are there any staff comments? Any board comments?
Just informally, this is not something that I think needs to go, but we are coming up on the February 300 foundation, foundation agenda then. I am going to put together the board donation, uh, foundation, I mentioned, due last year.
Great, thank you.
Another informal comment to us, Westwood Elementary now is partnering with the Ubandia Wells and the fourth school and probably getting a fitness. The more of our schools onboard, the more opportunities. Great, good project.
Any other board comments? Okay. Then we'll move into our superintendent's report.
Alright, we're in a very busy holiday season. Thanks to all our administrators here, busy schedule these last couple of weeks with concerts and shows. Tonight, if you get out early, you have a combined choir band performance in the auditorium from the South High School. From the side of out. South High School has schools around the 21st and 22nd December. And Monday, December 16th is Yule Tide in the North Side. Great opportunities for anyone experiencing it once, it's a holiday performance. Now, for more academic note, our dual degree program now they're great start of the semester. You can be an old freshman, you look forward to the next three years, you're getting their credit. You have 26 students enrolled in the board, 13 from each high school. And if you get to take classes, it'll allow them to graduate to both kind of college and district two hours high school degree and associate degree, let me say most four years compared to that. Great opportunity for those students. Thank everyone, we have talent.
Alright, uh, at the end of that, we go into our monitoring report. Dual language program.
So, I'm happy to share some information about our dual language program just to give you a brief update, as well as just kind of talk to you a little bit about some opportunities at the high school level for students to receive our Illinois State Seal of Honor RC and dual language recognition. So, just to give you a brief, um, update on kind of where our involvement is in the dual language program. Um, we started in a dual language in 04, 05 with 51 students and this school year we're up to 2,004 students. So, it's about 38 percent of the current population. We have over a thousand students in the ele- just at the elementary level. So, we have a lot of our families when they're going into that pre-K and kindergarten level, making the choice to go into dual language. And when you go to many of our elementary buildings, you actually see that there's, you know, a couple of dual languages are being introduced. So, it really has grown dramatically over the past now 15 years that we've had the program. We have been able, because of that growth, we had our first graduating class in 2016. And I'm really excited to also share that one of our students that graduated in that class in 2016 is coming back to student teacher us at Olson. So, that's really exciting too, because we're always trying to find those bilingual teachers. And so, this is actually a native English speaking student who was in our program and is now coming back to student, to student teacher with us, so I'm excited.
Hope they work through.
Yes, exactly. Um, so we have, because of that growth of our population, we've really been able to expand our courses over the last several years at the high school level. So, on the left column, you can see some of the courses that we offer in Spanish and the content areas. And then on the right side are the courses that we offer in the Spanish language side or the dual language department side. So, you, many of our students now, our core students are actually have the opportunity to take AP Spanish language as a sophomore instead of as a senior. And so, that's really exciting. We've really elevated the rigor of our, of our coursework. Um, all the way down from the elementary about four or five years ago, we brought in writing jet. We started working on that and now we've been working on it in middle school. So, that's allowed us to really bring some of that AP Spanish language, AP Spanish Lit to students on, at earlier times, we're excited about that. We also have some, this course right here, Advanced Conversation Phonetics is a 300 level college Spanish course that we have, that we have many students taking. And, um, next year, we're going to introduce one more course called Latin American Studies, which is also a 300 level course and we're aligning that to the course in a career work. So, we're excited about those opportunities at the high school level for our students. When we look at the Illinois State Seal of Honor RC, the state of Illinois adopted, um, the Illinois State Seal of Honor RC about four years ago, I believe it was 2016. And so, students, um, have to demonstrate proficiency in English as well as a second language. Um, so, in order to do that, you have to either take an AP class and get a four or five or another language assessment. And so, last year, we had 90 percent of our dual language students that got that Illinois State Seal of Honor RC. Now, if you go to Northern as a student, that means that Northern would award you 12 credit hours in the Spanish language. So, that's really great for our students that they can graduate high school with that seal of honor RC and then go on to a state university and get awarded credit. So, any state university in the state of Illinois has to award a credit. It just depends on which university, they've all kind of decided on different amounts. The most I've seen is Northern with 12, I think U of I awards six, so it's just different across the state. We also have the dual language recognition and this is really not tied to the state. It's more of a local recognition that we have. This is really recognizing students that continue with dual language and they take 60 credits of coursework over the course of their high school career. And so, that is equivalent to about six classes. They have to maintain C minus or better. And then they get to wear a dual language medallion at graduation. And last year, we had 91 percent of the class of 2019 that took 60 credits in the Spanish language. So, we feel that's a good, um, you know, that they're continuing to take biology in Spanish and world history in Spanish, and then also taking a full sequence of Spanish language classes freshman through, through senior in order to get that done. I also wanted to show a little bit of comparison about how this is specifically their Hispanic students are doing in English Language Arts on the IER, which is our state test, compared to other Hispanic students in surrounding districts. And so, I just chose a couple of rare levels to point out. So, here you can see in fifth grade, the blue is Woodstock, red is Belvedere and yellow is Crystal Lake. And so, this is students that are meeting or exceeding proficiency on the Language Arts Assessment and IER. And so, you can see here, Woodstock, 49 percent of our fifth graders, Hispanic students, are meeting that proficiency compared to in Belvedere, 16 percent of the Hispanic students and Crystal Lake, 22 percent. And again, I looked at seventh grade and every grade, I looked at third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, every grade, uh, we were exceeding, um, the other districts by a minimum of 10 percent in every grade level compared to Crystal Lake and Belvedere. So, I think that's exciting too, to really see that our Hispanic students are doing well in our district and in our program.
Know their dual language program as well.
Yes, Belvedere has dual language program and Crystal Lake has dual language program as well. And finally, I think this is probably one of the things I'm most excited about, because I taught at Woodstock High Schools, uh, 20 years ago with Mr. Hedley. And, you know, when I started here, we just taught English only to our Hispanic students, to our, um, and so, I was the English teacher for those, those students and they, they pretty much were very isolated. Now, we see our students, they're integrated with our native English speaking students and it's just a totally different environment. And so, when we started dual language in 2004, so if you remember back to that, that we had 51 students in first grade, our, um, population of Hispanic students, the graduation rate in that year was 64 percent. Fast forward now to 2019, last year, our district-wide Hispanic graduation rate was 94 percent. So, 30 percent increase over the course of those years. So, I think that's really exciting for us as we look at really promoting bilingualism, bilinguality, multiculturalism, that native language, and then being alongside in native English speakers and elevating that rigor within the classroom. And so, this Hispanic graduation rate that we have currently of 94 percent is compared to the state of Illinois, which is 82 percent. So, we're 12 percent higher than the state of Illinois Hispanic rate of graduation rate too. So, it's a lot of work by many people, but it's good information to share and think about how, um, some of our students are doing in the program. Questions?
Do we have a question about, um, that's the retention rate for kids coming from elementary to high school? I, the numbers speak for themselves.
Right. So, we do, I would say like, when we have kids, if we have kids that drop out, the majority of them are actually that fifth to sixth year. So, and that's kind of when that happens. Or sometimes we have, it's hard to know if we have students that, you know, are kind of displaying maybe a learning disability. And so, that kind of comes across more in fourth, fifth grade. And so, a parent might make a decision to withdraw their kid at that level. But we don't have a huge, I mean, we lose probably more kids to move, kids moving to other districts. That's really where the big part of our attrition comes from, is just kids moving to another district. And though when they do that, it's hard, we can't bring in kids, another fourth grader into the program. We can bring, you know, kids that have Spanish language ability, but it's hard to, obviously you can't bring in native English speakers after that first grade year. But the, but by the time they get to that eighth grade year, they're really kind of seeing more, hey, this is going to benefit me in life, right? I see where I can use this skill, I can see where this can take me in the future. And then we really start talking to the, well, we start talking to the parents all the way kindergarten. Look at the seal of honor RC and what this could mean for your, your child. But I think students really, once they get to that eighth grade year, ninth grade, obviously high school's more of a choice, they get to choose which classes they want to take. And so, if they're really interested in language, you know, they tend to stay in that path.
High school's more high grade too. I mean, you know, you know, in, you know, elementary, middle, that's a choice and the second classes. In high school, you know, they pick, they can choose where they're going to take, take a language that 12 percent of our kids do and then they work with them in the content class.
And we've actually had several, um, students that have gotten a seal of honor RC, not just Spanish and English, but also French and English. So, that, that's really exciting too. They've gotten into two languages, or three languages, she said. Any other questions?
Alright, the numbers are great. I mean, it's, if you, there's no denying that, you know, it's been, it's been for the last 15 years or so. And that's, that's a testament to the, you know, the, the creative thinking and sort of work and drag a lot of people along to the benefit and then that's terrific. And it's a testament to the staff and everybody who put this together, um, tutorials on site, just get integral, uh, it's just really wonderful program. Here to be committed, that one of the involvement, all of the attrition, providing the, 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 that, that has worked and has succeeded. What, what last question, what kind of is next? I mean, what are you kind of looking at in the future of things you want to try or, or might want to do with respect to, or are you just, we've got to wait and see how things are filtering out or that won't figure out what we're going to do next?
Well, I do think that we have, as I said, a large, both of our students are in that elementary level and more and more they may start choosing dual language. And so, I think we have to continue to look at those opportunities at the high school, maybe dive into some other content areas. But, I mean, I feel really good about the world language and, and the classes that we're able to, um, offer on that side, but maybe, you know, dive into a little bit more content areas and that's always an area to look at. And then I think, you know, we still have English learners that are, that start with us, but they're long-term English learners. And so, some of those students really looking at what work can we do for them. Because we have good, you know, we have a lot of good results with those students that are, you know, about 70 percent can attain proficiency. It takes years to attain proficiency, but they can attain proficiency after sixth, seventh grade. But then we have those students that continue to struggle. And so, I think it's just, that's kind of the next step too, is looking at what we can do to provide more support for those students as well.
And I recall from previous discussions, some discussion about some built-in limitations in the program in the sense of what we can, how we can expand it. For example, one of the, one of the questions was, we need, the goal was effectively to have a one-to-one ratio of the Spanish speakers to the English speakers. And there was also some problems getting enough teachers, getting enough instructors for it. Are we finding some of those limitations, trying to relax a little bit and make it a little easier to, to work around, or are we still looking at things along that to kind of put a ceiling over it?
Well, I think, um, you know, as more districts are, are adopting dual language programs because of the research that's out there and the success that they see, it, it is making it a little more difficult to find staff. But we were, um, starting a teacher residency program next year and we're in the process of doing our recruitment. And so, really trying to focus on, um, people that live within McHenry County. We actually have four candidates that are looking at that we're going to be part of that residency program. So, they're bilingual and we're going to be training them, they'll spend a year in our classrooms, working alongside our teachers. And so, we're looking at that as an avenue to kind of help us with some of that bilingual teacher shortage. And so, we'll continue to explore that and refine that and really looking into our families that live in McHenry County, because we find that that's where a lot of the bilingual people can come from, because this is where they want to stay and they want to live here and work here. As far as the other limitations, you know, um, I think one thing that teachers would say is, whereas 20 years ago, we might've had more, uh, students that came that were Hispanic, that spoke a lot of Spanish. Now, they're coming to, you know, they're second or third generation and maybe the grandma speaks Spanish to them, but they're not speaking Spanish as much at home. And so, that means that, you know, we really have to have really strong teachers that can really lead those language models, because sometimes the students can't access those language models as much as they used to, used to 20 years ago, because they're, they're more immersion bilinguals, they're coming to school learning both Spanish and English.
We're having, the community splits itself. And when they come this year, then about half our population is dual, about half goes dual. You know, if three, fours wanted to go dual, we wouldn't be able to staff that currently. So, I mean, it's kind of a limitation, but it's also been, you know, a self-cultivating process. It's that, you know, if we have a small waiting list for some years, next year, you know, if you're kindergarten or an after-class section, I need to roll out. But, um, the community's kind of split itself, I think, to manage it. If it ever got overwhelmingly more so, um, what about fan population would be an infringement, a high percentage.
One of the limitations that, that used to be, that I've been experiencing in our communities, at the high school level, finding qualified dual language futures and have content expertise is tough. And I suspect it's still tough. I, I can't imagine that it's a lot better. Do you, do you agree with that still? Is it still an issue?
I do, I do agree with that. And I think maybe that's one of the reasons why we haven't expanded as many of our content classes is because just, you know, there's more difficult to find some of those teachers. Um, that's also, you know, you know, one of the avenues we, we work with is bringing teachers from Spain, as you know, because up to then, they're very, they're grounded in their content. They have, obviously, they're bilingual, they're native speakers of Spanish. Um, but, you know, we're trying to work, look at, always been looking at, thinking about some of those other teachers that maybe teach at middle school and how can we get them more endorsements or more coursework so that they can maybe teach in the high school? So, that's something I'm always thinking about, thinking about ahead, just to kind of, um, because we have to be growing them and maybe they don't come to us with those endorsements or that coursework, but then we need to be coaching them and talking to them about, hey, have you ever thought about being a high school teacher?
Retention rate is high, it seems to be, you got a thousand kids at the lower. Eventually, they're going to get high school.
Right.
And we've got to be able to look at that, especially at some point.
So, yeah, we're thinking about those things, so.
That's one of my reasons.
And she's really tried, I mean, we've been great, you know, we're really focusing on top areas, right? Biology, one, you've got some other social sciences and trying not to stray, sure that's a fair reason, there are too many fields.
Right.
And trying to get a couple of core classes. And thinking, you know, if we can get two people to do that, then we can, you know, carry a lot of our need for one year. I think that, that's kind of some of that, that issue you had from the job.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move into our new business. Our first item on our new business is our presentation, the parents' satisfaction.
Yeah, we presented to the board, I'll go through it, thanks for asking. We had 1,400 people complete the survey, about 300. We didn't give a flash, we could have given a five cent just in state, we gave it two years ago. About 300 responses, which is nice. Some highlights, I'm informed that top progress at school are over 92 percent. Feel welcome when I call it, with school over 92 percent. See information to a school grant activity event over 90 percent. Feel staff in my school, my child's school effective, 94 percent. Feel my child's passion, safe in, in school, safe, 95 percent. Feel my child's true dignity or type of high school staff, 95.3 percent. But I think for us, just some really great results from our parents. We changed it up this year too, we have parents, one of the most preferred method of, um, communication and they gave us really good feedback to look at. Our elementary school is really dojo heavy. And then, you know, just a lot of, if you give us good old Twitter problems, we're not as popular as we think at times. You know, it feels like a lot of that interactive, interactive communication, get phone call, email.
Does anybody have any questions while any of the comments regarding the teachers' parents' satisfaction survey? Can I say a question, I was asking, before we do next, what do we do?
Yeah, well, there's various, we're not as happy, but the, um, that we focus on. Communication's always a key one, just, you know, some of these scores are a bit, we want to continue to communicate. Um, you know, aware of my school of progress to improve the goal. You know, I mean, it's in the 80, 88, 182 percent, which is good, we can go up. Um, you know, in all honesty, we sit 90 kind of becomes our threshold. Maybe below 90, we can look at, how can we, can we get our audience, or how do we reach out, figure out why we're high. There, maybe better understand results in some cases. If they're there, they're worth, kind of strong, if they're up, we're, how we can do. We also, we break it down by level, gives a lot of, we can really dig down and see by level, um, how our parents are responding, just kind of go off on that too. So, you know, we're constantly looking at, personally, I spent time going over and looking at the individual building level, the container, the, but that's probably our biggest.
Alright, does anybody have any other questions or comments regarding the parents', um, the satisfaction survey? Alright, we'll actually record on that, so we'll move on to our next item then, which is approval of the resolution approving the 2019 tax levy.
So, we went over the levy detail of the last meeting, so tonight I'm just going to go over the key points. Uh, the total EAV is estimated to increase 7.63 percent from 144.2 million to 908.6 million. And these are estimates, we don't know the final number until the spring. Um, included in this number is $1.5 million of tip, one recovery. There's 194 parcels from Mississippi of Woodstock Tip 1 that are being moved to Tip 2, so we have a one-time opportunity to, uh, access that incremental value before they're frozen again for the next 23 years at Tip 2. Uh, the 2019 tax levy without debt service is 23.19 million dollars. And then when you add the debt service or the principal and interest payments that the district has, we would, we would need to add another 10.35 million dollars to the levy. However, we've, um, we're asking the board to approve an abatement of 2.99 million dollars, which is the bond series 2014 principal and interest payment. And by reducing the levy by that 2.9 million, that reduces our debt service to 7.35 million, which then allows us to reduce our tax rate by about 16 cents. So, we're looking at a tax rate going down from 6.71 last year to 6.55 this year. And that means about a hundred dollar decrease on, on taxes paid on $200,000. So, do you have questions on that?
Questions? Okay, if not, this is suggested motion on page, page 83 of your materials in your boardroom.
Move to, move to wave the reading out and approve the resolution authorizing the final tax levy for the year 2019.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hedley, seconded by Mr. Parisi, roll call please.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, and the next item is the consideration of a resolution abating a portion of the tax levy for the year 2018 to pay debt.
Okay, so the next step in the levy, which we just talked about, is to approve a resolution to abate or reduce the taxes needed to make the bond series 2014 principal and interest paid. So, our bond counsel, Captain Carter, has prepared the, uh, documentation, the resolution. And once the board approves it, then I file that with the county clerk at the same time that I file the levy. And then that authorizes the county clerk to reduce the amount of taxes that they extend. So, and then use reserves to make that pay.
Okay, any questions or concerns? Now, this is a suggested motion on page 100 of your materials or in boardroom.
Move toward the reading of and approve the resolution abating a portion of the tax levy for the year 2019 to pay debt service on the general obligation school refunding bonds service 2014 of community unit school district number 200 in McHenry County, Illinois.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hedley, seconded by Mr. Parisi, roll call please.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Next item is the approval of a property tax relief grant.
Okay, so last year, the state board of education began offering these property tax relief grants. And we did apply and we're not successful in receiving it. But again, they are offering them, they just announced it a few weeks ago. And we have a deadline, it's called January 6th to apply. And these grants provide school districts an opportunity to lower the property tax burden on local property pay taxpayers with the state replacing a portion of the tax revenue with the state cost. So, um, once all school districts apply, then as we calculate, um, everybody's grant and, uh, they'll let us know whether we receive the grant. There's only $50 million available. And right now, 200 is ranked 76 out of 851 school districts. And we would be eligible to receive a grant of over 4.4 million if we were to abate 5.1 million. So, they don't give you the full abate amount, they give us about 86, 87 percent. However, there's, uh, almost $124 million ahead of us. So, the 75 school districts ahead of us, their grant amounts total 120, almost 124 million. So, you know, we did this last year, we were not successful, but I believe we might be the right thing to do. And we'll apply and we might get somewhere between 0 and 4.4 million. I would look forward to, to do it.
Alright, if you have any questions or comments, let's hold for it. Okay. Well, in order to do that, we have a suggested motion on page 100, 107 of your materials or in boardroom.
Move to approve the property tax relief grant application for the school year 2020.
Motion by, to Dr. Ferris?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Goodwell. Roll call please.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, the next item then is our approval of budget development parameters and assumptions for the 2020, 2021 budget.
Right, so on page 108 is a chart with 11 parameters and assumptions that we'll go over. Uh, we're going to focus on the column in the middle that's highlighted in the lab. The first item is that we present a balanced budget if expenditures not exceeding funds available. So, basically, we take available revenue and we combine that with fiscal year beginning fund balances less our own taxes. Number two is basically the levy that we just filed, we're looking at our EAV. We're, we're estimating that our reassessments will be 6.54 percent, our growth will be 1.09. will be one point oh-nine, our EAV will be nine hundred and eight point six million. Number three is that we're using the two thousand and eighteen consumer price index of one point nine, that's the CPI that we have to use for the levy that then rolls into the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Collection rate for our taxes is ninety-nine point five. You see, in the previous years, it's been ninety-nine seven, ninety-nine six, but to be conservative, we use ninety-nine five in budget development. Student enrollment, we're showing will be about six thousand three hundred and thirty-seven, so down about maybe twenty from this current school year. The EAV and the CPRT used in the John State A4 are really just prior year's numbers, you can cross-reference that in the nineteen-twenty column. Number seven is the evidence-based funding formula, or from the John State A, we're going to assume that we will receive twenty million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand and fifty dollars based on what we received last year, or, I'm sorry, this year. So that's really not finalized yet, none of those numbers have been finalized by the state, but we're going to assume that they'll stay the same. Again, number eight, same, kind of the same thing, specialized transportation reimbursements, those were keeping the same as this school year, three point two-five million. Again, they're not finalized by the state, they should be shortly, but the dollar unknown. Number nine is we'll use the dollar equivalent for one year's taxes, will be budgeted as available revenue on the right expenditures. Number ten is our health and dental rates, we're assuming that we'll have an eight percent increase in health and zero in dental. And then number eleven is these will change, so as time goes on, we have more information in the state, these items will be updated, and then the budget will be built. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, this is a suggested motion on page one hundred and ten of your materials in wordboard.
Move to approve the budget development parameters and assumptions for use in preparation for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Parisi, seconded by Dr. Ferris, roll call please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, next, next is to move into our approval of work with middle school life safety.
So Steve and I have been looking at what life safety projects we want to tackle this coming summer, and the growth at Hartford is our highest priority right now, so consequently we need ISB to approve a life safety on my next, we're section one, two, and five, and the cost we are estimating right now is two hundred and thirty thousand five thirty-five. We did section three last summer, you may recall that, and we already have an amendment on file for section four, so the plan to do all remaining pieces of the growth at Hartford this coming summer. And we need board approval to file an amendment, and then it takes about six weeks typically for the state to approve, and we'll be working on this and so on, and that's ready.
Okay, any questions or comments? Now, this is a suggested motion on page one hundred and twelve of your materials or in wordboard.
Move to approve these supply safety funds in order to make work for pairs and north of middle school.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Parisi, seconded by Dr. Bidwell, roll call please.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, and then finally, it's approval of our school student information system.
So our student information system is what, interface with a database, is to talk about student records, student enrollment, all those sorts of things. Our current system is dying as well, dead, it was bought by another company, it's not very easy to use, it's one of my least favorite things about the district. And we can switch over, the reason we haven't switched over is because it was prohibitive cost-wise, but now, one company owns both East School and Powers, we want to switch to, there's an upfront cost, over the three-year costly contract, you can save enough money on what we're paying now to eat or die. So basically, it's a, it's a net zero gain, and we have a much, much better product, user-friendly for staff and for technology staff, too. If I wanted to report, run out to Paul George, it takes him twenty minutes to write it, and me fifteen minutes to find it, it's a waste of time. So we'd enter the late twentieth century by going to a new system.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
If we're entering the late nineteenth century, why, why are we?
No, I mean, most of the people had this, like, twentieth century. What we have is cutting edge. Here's what happened, the same company owns both. East School is kind of letting die, because they own it, a lot of people still use it. Powers School is continuing to update it on a daily basis, and it is a product, it's a product in the market. So when I say we're entering the late twentieth century, I only mean we're going to have same capabilities as a lot of people have. At that point, what we have is active cutting edge, and it gets better day by day, so pretty why don't you do it, continue to advocate for it, and to advocate.
All right, does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, if not, this is a suggested motion on page one hundred and seventeen of your materials in wordboard.
Move to approve the implementation of the Powers School student information system for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Headley, seconded by Mr. Parisi, roll call please.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, that's all of our new business. Do we have any committee reports from having, having met since the last board meeting, or anything to report? Okay, all right, if that is it, I will entertain a motion adjourned, after which, all of you a happy holidays, and say thank you for two thousand and nineteen, it's been wonderful, it always is with you guys, so thank you. Anybody move to adjourn? So move, move by Dr. Ferris, second please.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Bidwell, roll call please.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.